All right, it is six o'clock and I know we have a busy schedule tonight, so we better get started. So how can we start with roll call?
Benson.
Here.
Ernie.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
President.
Iba.
Here.
Einer.
Here.
Oger.
Here.
Mary Johnson.
Here.
Jan Juliel.
Here.
So you turned it down, or?
Here.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. So at this study session, we are going to discuss the trap, neuter, and release, or the TNR program, for cats in our community without a human home. Whether you call those feral cats or community cats, there's been some debate. So kind of to lay out the plan for this evening, first, we're going to hear from Carrie Hachesky, the Director of Heartland Humane Society, about this potential TNR program. Next, our Police Department and the Heartland Humane Society will talk about our current cat population and the problems they are or could pose for our community. Then, our City Attorney, Ross Denherter, will talk through the changes that would need to be made to our animal ordinance, as well as our Humane Society contract to accommodate the TNR program if we want to pursue it. And so, as those of us on the Commission listen to tonight's proceedings, I would like us to think about whether we want to move forward with the TNR program and to update our ordinance, as well as the HHS agreement to accommodate it. And because we are expecting a large crowd later tonight, I hope to wrap things up at 6:45 PM, just to keep us on track. So with that, Carrie, would you like to step to the podium and talk about this potential program?
I wear my favorite necklace.
I'm going to kind of paint a picture, or try to. I do know in your handouts, I think, if you're a numbers person, most of the numbers I'm going to scream at you tonight are in, on a one page. But first, I really looked from January 1st to August, end of August, 31st of this year. So during that timeframe, Heartland, not with the city, took in 233 animals by owner surrender, 110 animals by stray, and then 83 animals from holding agencies such as the Yankton Pound. So that's 426 animals in 243 days. And I simply share that to just prove that we are doing a quality service before we talked about these cats. If we look at the Yankton City facility during that same timeframe, there were 48 cats brought into the Yankton Pound. Two were reclaimed, so that leaves us with 46. 25 of those were adults, and they go through the process and usually get adopted. One adult was euthanized for extreme aggression at the request of both the city and the previous owner. 21 kittens didn't fare so well. Officers are being requested to take them at super young ages. I think the youngest we saw, we estimated to be 12 to 13 days. Five of them were euthanized after becoming extremely sick and not responding to medications. Two died naturally overnight after day one in the pound. Three kittens broke out in ringworm after we took them out of the holding facility, causing the shelter to completely shut down for cleaning processes. One kitten that was brought in in June, probably born in May, has been on and off the adoption floor three times. Ringworm just keeps appearing in this cat. She's now five months old and not very nice. In addition, two adult cats came in ear tipped, meaning someone had spent the money to make sure that they were rabies-certified, vaccinated, and cannot reproduce. However, what I want to talk to you guys tonight is that the ordinance does not allow for officers to return those cats back to our community. So what is an ear tip? It is literally a clean cut on the top of a cat's ear and the universal sign that says, "I've been fixed and I've been rabies-vaccinated." To paint the other side of the story for Heartland, we were contacted about 29 stray kittens in city limits that never made it to our shelter or to the pound. And we were contacted about 122 cats and kittens in Yankton County outside of city limits that never reached our door, and they didn't respond to follow-up phone calls. So that is a total of 151 cats we were asked to help that we never did in that timeframe. If those 151 cats are unfixed, and we assume their lifespan is three years as an outdoor cat, and that they're responsible for two litters of five kittens, that's 4,500 extra cats in Yankton County. So what if we fixed them? And that is simply what I'm proposing to you guys. Introducing you to TNR and community cats and hoping the city can kind of support the concept. Cats are divided into three populations nationally. You have your personal pet. You have your cats living in a shelter, rescue, or breeding household. And then you have community cats. Community cats can be outside feral cats, the wild and social ones, and they can be the friendly ones we find on our doorsteps. These cats are unowned, even though folks may provide food or water or get really creative with shelter. They can serve, people serve to advocate for them in their communities. HHS advocates that TNR is the humane way to properly control this population. So TNR is just that. We trap them, or they're brought to us. We work with a vet to vaccinate them with rabies, and then spay and neuter them. They're then picked up or returned back to the area they were found in. An estimated 40 million community cats live in the United States annually, and only 2% are guessed to be spayed or neutered. That's creating 80% of all kittens born in the United States right now. In addition, a recent study suggested that 81% of Americans believe leaving a cat outside is preferable over catching it and killing it, and 10% of Americans admit to feeding one. So, data has shown that TNR cats carry no rabies concerns for our community, and they're actually less aggressive because of the lack of hormones. And we've been awarded two different grants to kind of help introduce this program to Yankton. One is a $1,500 focus just on this within city limits, and an additional $3,000 to focus on Yankton County as a whole. And there's many ways to start introducing this. We have three real good options here. One, we can take cats coming into our pound and evaluate them. If they're determined hard to adopt, we could work with those who put them in the pound to return them back to the area they were found in. Two, the city can become an active participant, so maybe once a month or once every other month, we actually trap with the city, maybe in the Meridian District for starts, or at the water treatment plant, and continue to do those efforts until we feel like we have the population under control. And the third way is just to work with people already feeding them and have them bring them to us on our spay-and-neuter days. The grants we wrote for, we have at a goal of 50 cats in Yankton City Limits by next June, which would prevent cats from coming into the pound or being euthanized. We also then wrote the grant for Yankton County to look at farm litters coming into Yankton through social media. Long-term, if we hosted six clinics a year and 20 surgeries at each clinic, it's 120 cats or 36,000 prevented births in a decade. The pet ordinance needs to be revised, and here is why. Right now, we have a leash law for cats in our city, which means that any cat roaming the streets is subject to being picked up by animal control. There's better ways to do it, and I know Ross is going to introduce you some things. But some examples that I gave Ross when we first chatted was Waco, Texas, has zero leash laws for cats. Instead, cats must wear a rabies tag displayed by a collar or harness or have the ear tip. And in Mesa, Arizona, they don't pick up a cat unless it's deceased or injured. After conversations with my ad hoc board, that included veterinarian Sam Mailhoff, community cat caregiver in Vermillion Judy Zwolick, and Invera infection prevention nurse Jan Johnson, who's here with me tonight, we're suggesting the city look at three things. One, that cats should be only picked up if they are injured or look unhealthy, if they are inflicting injury to a person or another animal. Two, cats wearing collars or having ear tips should be left alone regardless of the complaint and allowed to migrate around the community unless, once again, inflicting injury. And then, three, that the city should support community cats, using the words "TNR" and "community cats," and should not charge a community cat caregiver with an animal at large for any reason, nor hold them responsible for injury or property damage. Caregivers should still be held responsible for sanitary housing conditions of the animals. If I circle back to the beginning, in supporting this program, we'll stop having kittens with ringworm in the Yankton Pound, which would help our shelter. The two ear-tip cats that were caught this summer, we'll no longer have people who spent that money wondering what happened to them, and instead would be in cared-for environments instead of dumped on farms, which is what we had to do with them. And we've been doing this in Vermillion since 2013. We're fixing about 50 cats a year there. And as these programs continue, I know if you're a dog lover, it's going to involve dogs and litters and prevent that too, but the cats are really an issue. If we're continuing to turn away 200 to 400 cats a year, we have to solve the problem. So, I hope that makes sense, and I am here for questions and answers, along with Jan for Heartland.
Commission, do you have any questions for Carrie at this time?
Can you talk about the trap and release? I know you're doing it in Vermillion. How often? Is that a monthly occurrence?
So, South Dakota poses problems with that. We don't really have a schedule because of the weather. The city of Vermillion funds $1,000 a year to the TNR program, but that comes with some restrictions on months we can trap. They don't want it to be too hot or too cold. They don't want citizens to, you know, to say that we're being abusive. We generally work the program May through October, depending on when winter hits, and we're actually changing it. So tomorrow night is our last trap night. Heartland has been doing all the trapping with the city since 2013. What has happened, though, is we've identified a whole bunch of caregivers, and they are going to start bringing us the cats. It's just going to be an easier transition and less city time. And that's actually a lot of what I'm proposing here in Yankton, is let's just identify the feeders. So, that's been going on for, the city's been funding it for about three years. We've been doing it since 2013. It poses problems. You'll never trap them all, and sometimes you trap the same one, and sometimes you get kittens that are five days or six days old, and you have to release them. So the trapping isn't perfect. It never will be. And there's a lot of studies on that, but they say to keep trapping in the same area until you're catching, like 90% of what you're catching is ear tipped. So you would focus, if the city got involved at that level, I would just pick an area that's maybe the most complative right now, and then we'll find a city location to set those traps at.
Can you talk about your spay and neuter clinics? Are those in conjunction with trap and release, or do you do those additionally?
So, we received a $10,000 community grant to start that program as well. We'll probably do those at the same day, but it's kind of the same, the same topic, as we really want to work, regardless of what the city does tonight, we still want to solve this problem. So, it's kind of, it's kind of the backdoor way of letting people say that they're their pets and bringing them to us for a donation. So it's the same concept, it just has a different name.
Hey, Carrie, is, is this all of a sudden? Is this just growing, and why is, what's causing this, or are we just trying to take care of a problem? I mean, it seems like they're just, it goes in, I remember a few years ago, there was so many feral cats, and then it seemed like it wasn't talked about. Now we have an increase. Is there a reason for that, or do we know?
I think it's talked about as something happens. So I feel like the last time Yankton talked about cats, we had a business owner shooting them at the river, for those who remember that. And there was this big outcry, right? Feral cats are all over the US. I just went to a conference in May in Kansas City, and there's literally now, I mean, the city of Las Vegas has its own nonprofit that's doing this. Omaha built a state-of-the-art spay-and-neuter clinic probably already five or six years ago, because they, their studies showed that they had more cat, they had like triple the cats in population than humans in the state, the city of Omaha, and they wanted to get ahead of it. So I think they're fixing about 1,000 cats a year at this facility. They have it open one Friday, and anyone can bring a cat in. So this is common everywhere across the US. It's just the bigger cities are handling it, and towns the size of Yankton haven't talked about it.
So is our biggest population down in like the Meridian Plaza area, or do you know?
I have, I've never asked the city where the complaints come from the most. I would assume that if that's being tracked, there's some. I know that people see them downtown, because we're, that's where you walk, right? So between the bridge and everything else. If we hear about it at all, that's where they're kind of, and I feel like the police station picks up a lot of cats at the police station, or in that neighborhood. So I would say that way towards the river. There's also a food source there. So you've got the downtown and a lot of the bars and restaurants and things like that. You know, I would pitch, which isn't in my pitch, because I can't make any promises, is we got these grants because they're watching Heartland, and that's something I'm proud of. There is no other shelter right now in the Midwest talking about community cats. I mean, you have got the big ones, and Omaha's got the city partnership, and outside of that, Kansas City and Des Moines, and no one's focused on them. We're already in talks of maybe presenting this at a few conferences in the future, at national conferences, about how small towns can be tracking this, so.
So when you talk about the $1,500 for the city of Yankton, does that cover all the costs, or does the city of Yankton need to contribute more to make that happen?
No, I think Heartland will cover the costs. We have not, so we haven't finalized any programming. I'm pitching to my board that it is a free will donation clinic, because I think there's folks who will give something. But the grant kind of gets us through at least those 50 cats to kind of trial and air some stuff. So, some people charge, there's clinics, Cedar County Vet Services did this program forever with farmers, and they just canceled it recently, and they charged, it started at $25 a cat, it got up to $50 a cat, and the farmer started complaining. Vets can't cover the overhead costs of this like a shelter can. We can just use different resources. We can use different anesthesia meds, and it's completely safe, but we're regulated differently in the vet world. And so, it's impossible for a vet to spay a cat for $50 and not have to incur some of those costs. So the vets aren't doing this anymore, where we can do it for 30, 40, 50 bucks a cat.
Hey, Carrie, what, could you highlight some of the biggest problems having, I mean, in our community, having too many cats around?
Brad?
Yes?
Do you have, have an answer for that one?
I do.
I'm going to, I mean, Brad's the one dealing with the community more than we are within Yankton. We push them back on Brad, so I'll let him answer that.
Yeah, I guess this is a nice transition into the next agenda item of having the Police Department talk about the problems they're seeing. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, one of the things that we are looking at with the trap, neuter, and release program, there are some issues that we would face as a law enforcement agency. I'll let Brad cover it. There's a specific case that we've just dealt with very recently that kind of highlights this, and I'll let him go through that before you.
Some of the issues that we have with the number of cats in the community, of course, are the nuisance things. Just recently, this last week, we got a call from a 90-year-old woman up on Peacock, who was distraught and crying when she talked to me on the phone, in that she has a front door where a cat has been relieving itself, and the odor was really bad. And she wanted to know what her options were for that. We did not have any idea who the cat belonged to. She thinks she did, but I did contact the person that she thought may be the owner of the cat, but it wasn't their cat. And so, we have this problem where we have this cat that's, that's going to the bathroom by her front door and smelling the thing up. Just the number of cats that we have running around town is a problem. I remember working night shift, the night, the cats are nocturnal, you'll usually see them at night. You drive through the residential areas, and you see cats running all over the place. So there are a lot of cats in the residential areas, they do come out. And then we do have a certain amount of people that are feeding them at night, which, of course, needs to be controlled. So, there are a lot of issues with that. My concern as a, as a police officer with this program, I've got a couple of concerns, and that is, although I do believe that the cat population needs to be controlled, and I do believe that this program will control the population of cats, I mean, it has to with, with what's, how it's laid out. The issues that I have with it personally, or as a police officer, example, this elderly lady that has an issue with a cat in her front, front yard, going to the bathroom. I told her my options, and one of them was to set a live trap, and we could catch that trap and take it out of there, and hopefully, you know, find a home for it or someplace other than, than her front yard. My concern with the program is, the way I understand it would be, this cat would be spayed or neutered, and then taken right back to that area where the, where I picked it up. I don't think that the community would receive that very well, especially if they have a problem with that, with the cat, or cats, if they see a police officer pull up and release that cat into that area where it was picked up. I, I just, I think I'm going to look like the bad guy on that deal, and I don't need any help with that. Not that I'm a bad guy, but, that came out wrong, I apologize. Just, okay, you know what I mean. So I have a real concern about that, and I'm not sure how to fix that problem. I don't know, I'm new to this position, so, and I've thought about this, and I don't know what the answer is, as far as, you know, when a cat is, is live-trapped and caught, you know, what are our options? You know, what do we do with these animals? You know, there's, we'll never catch them all, so the problem is not going to be 100% fixed. I think it's just going to be a continual thing, and, you know, I think the answer's probably out there. It's kind of, kind of a coincidence. Chief Harris has some people that came into Yankton Friday and today, and gave us a seminar, and, and the lady that's part of this seminar, when she was a police officer, she's a retired sergeant, she said that one of her biggest struggles was that she was in charge of that wherever she was from. And she said, as a police officer, she got more death threats on her and her family while trying to take care of the feral cat population in the town than being a police officer. So it's not, it's not just a problem that Yankton has, it's all over the place. And I don't have the answers, I just know that, thinking about this, I can see some real concerns, and coming up with a solution, I think, is, is going to be tricky.
Just to kind of add what Brad had said, one of the things that I do know that works, the trapping and neutering portion of this program is outstanding, but then what do we do with it after that point? And I think for us to go back and release would really cause us a lot of animosity in our community. I don't know if there's another solution to that or not, but what Brad described would give us really a big black eye if we had to take that cat back to where we had trapped it. And usually, we're there on a complaint basis. We're actually there because somebody's called us there to trap a cat that they are having problems with. But this, but the neutering portion, I think, is absolutely important, because, like Carrie said, the one thing you can do is control the population. They don't continue to grow. And I think that's the important piece, it's the rest of it, how do we administer it? And I don't have an answer for you, I really don't, other than just giving you the stuff that causes us problems. We could add.
And I know the question was asked earlier, and she said that she doesn't necessarily hear it all the time. Do we have a certain area of Yankton that you get more complaints than others?
I don't think so. Just taking the calls, I, when that question was brought up, I thought about that, and I don't think so. It's just residential areas. It seems to be when there's a, an abandoned building on a property is a problem. We may have a problem for a period of time. The feral cat issue, they, you know, that's their housing, that's where they're at, and that's where they seem to congregate. So once that problem gets taken care of, we move on to another area. So, no, it, there really isn't any certain area.
One of the things that Carrie did mention, it seems like downtown, we do get a lot of people walking in with cats, and they give them to us at the police station. And one of the things we're looking at doing and working with Carrie to have them, instead of bringing them to us and having us to drive out there, they could take it directly out to the shelter, and we're working on that process right now. The other thing is, is when Brad talked about the abandoned buildings, we're working very closely with Dave Mingo's group to try to work together to deal with those abandoned properties and those isolation, those environments and those stuff that create a real home for those things. And so, we're looking at working together with those things and trying to come in conjunction to solve that problem, but it is, it is a problem for us.
And I don't, Carrie, maybe you can answer this for me, but I, the way I understand it is that not all cats in your TNR program, not all cats are candidates for this? A feral cat or a wild cat is not a candidate?
No, they are.
They are?
They're just harder to catch.
Okay.
Obviously.
Okay. All right. And once, and once they're taken care of, they're easier to catch?
No, you'll never, you'll never catch them again.
That's what I'm afraid of. And these complaints that we have, for instance, that the elderly lady up on Peacock, she's not an animal hater. She's not, never once did she say that. She's just tired of the problem. And, and it's, it's going to be a problem, that type of a problem is going to be there regardless if this TNR program goes forward or not. We're just going to have to figure out a solution, or an explanation of why I'm putting that cat back on her doorstep. Once I've picked it up and fixed her problem by taking the cat out of there, now I'm bringing the cat back. I'm, I just don't think I'm going to be her friend anymore, and that's, that concerns me.
I validate that concern. So I'll follow up a little bit. We did talk with the, with the police here, oh gosh, before I had neck surgery, so early August. And I listened, and I think there was a lot of proposals, and even when I talked to you guys tonight about options, I think first and foremost, we would have to get rid of some leash laws to be successful, for Heartland to be successful in doing some cross-education. I don't blame anyone for not wanting to donate 15 or $20 a cat to know the city could possibly euthanize it, because every regular citizen in every community across the United States just believes cities kill cats. That's just, that's, studies have found, it's really hard to break that image. In addition, we're doing this in Vermillion, and that is what they do. They kill more cats than we fix every year, the city does. They just have agreed not to kill the ear-tipped ones. Two-fold, so if the urinating cat was nice, Brad would take it to the Humane Society right now, probably not have the time to tell me why it's there. We will put it on the adoption floor, it'll pee in someone's house, they'll return it, it'll pee in someone's house, they'll return it. And you have now just circled a terrible lifespan for this male cat. There's nuisance cats out there, and Ross is grinning, because we've talked about this. I'm not representing Heartland when I say this, but 100% of cats probably aren't always going to be well-behaved, and sometimes we have to remove the ugly ones or the aggressive ones, the ones that are causing a lot of nuisance. So I don't want in any way to think that that's not a relationship. We euthanized a cat that bit someone this summer. It was a pet cat. It was not a nice cat. We even evaluated it and thought we would save it, and then I called Brad, and I was like, no, that, that cat is vicious. So, I think that if the city is at least changing the leash laws and accepting the concept at this point, that's a win. And maybe that has nothing to do after that with the city relationship and Heartland moving forward, and we can discuss this then when we've got some more data, how many are still getting picked up, stuff like that. In Vermillion, we have a one-pager that explains the program, so anytime we're in a community collecting cats, we're leaving them on cars and doors and things like that. And that is also something that we could make for Yankton and for Brad and Animal Control to kind of be able to explain the process to a resident, in hopes that they can say, "I'll leave the cat alone, and if it's still a problem, I'll call you again." I guess that would be my hope for year one here, is, hey, it's an ear-tip cat, can you just let it go? This is why. Call me if it's still a problem. But historically, the male cat, I'm sure it's a male cat, I'm sure it's a tomcat, and I'm sure there's unfixed female cats in the neighborhood, and he's just taking up residence on the doorstep, so.
Carrie, can I ask you a couple of questions in Vermillion? Are they released back to the place where they were trapped?
So, yes. So the city picks, we've been doing the library there for many years, it's right where the bluff hits in Vermillion, and so it's a really great nature environment. On top of it, they have some feeders within a block. They have three people feeding them within a block of the library. So we do work with the city, and we trap and return back to city property. Otherwise, it is people who contact us. And some examples where I say we really partner, St. Ignace Church has a huge cat problem. They had a janitor feeding them for a long time. We have trapped over 50 cats just on St. Ignace property in Vermillion, and we're not returning them, because the church does not wear a cat. I mean, you don't want cats living, I don't know, I just like vision toddlers and cats in Sunday mornings and Easter dresses, and that's probably not the best combination. So we actually do remove those. We put them in groups of four or five, and we put them on farms. We also work with people who are feeding them in their backyard, and they will put them back in their backyard. So there's a process of returning the cat. It's a little different in every situation.
So, so can you release a cat perhaps within the community, but not necessarily where you found it? And do then, do they just find their way back, since they have a sort of sense of finding their way back? Or is that putting them in peril because they're not in their hunting area or whatever?
If there was sincere wanting to know exactly how that works, we can microchip cats, and when they're, you're tipped and picked back up, scan them and try to kind of follow that data. I don't want to jump on a limb and say it either way. So what I will say is that Heartland does not have the relationship to take every cat out of city limits. So when I share the St. Ignace cats, that is, that's a partnership with the city, St. Ignace and Heartland, and that's things we could do within the city in some areas that are repetitively a problem. But it's hard. So I have five female cats on my farm, they've all gone through it. One came in a set of three from St. Ignace, and one with two. And I feel like when you keep them in groups they've already lived with, they do really well, but you have to hold them for, like, we, we lock them up in a barn for a week and feed them really good food twice a day, and reestablish the home front. Four of mine are always around, one I see maybe once a month within the mile. So it does work, it's limited, it doesn't always have that success. I feel like the farmers were putting cats on about every three or four years, they call, and they're like, hey, I could use some more cats. But the average span of any community cat is three to five years, so it's still a success in my book. Their environment's different, there's coyotes out there that they're not used to in city limits, but there's also not cars, so.
Commissioners, any more questions for Carrie or our police department?
Carrie, I think you should outline for us, what are the main benefits of having TNR community cats here in Yankton?
If you look at the long term, and we talked about, so, if we fixed 120 cats a year, that's 36,000 less kittens in a decade. That is my first and foremost. I think that the relationship we've created with the city and Animal Control has been all positive, except when my staff are dealing with 10-day-old kittens and 21-day-old kittens, and there's this concept of like, oh, it was on the road. Yeah, it wasn't by itself, but now it is, and we can't go put it back. That is where this focus is, is preventing the kittens from being in the pound constantly. I mean, I know 21 doesn't sound like a lot, but 21 kittens wreaked havoc on our shelter. So, that's for and foremost. You will eventually see less cats roaming around Yankton, but it will never be no cats, and it's never gonna be perfect. I think the other thing is, is you do have a huge pet population of people in this town who appreciate pets, and when the stats are there, that 80% of people think it's the right thing to do, it's a win for the community if it's not costing you guys anything. So, you'll have residents supporting it, you're gonna have residents hating it too, but the majority are going to like what you're doing. We also had, I'll give you kind of one example, I don't know if Officer Parker had to deal with this, and maybe Jake Hoffner would shed some light too. You had a very good citizen earlier this year who had a nuisance cat in his garage or backyard, and had called us, and we were like, well, only the city can trap in city limits, you have to have city rights to do that, call the police. The police trapped this cat, and he was viciously angry that the alternative was to go dump it in Nebraska or kill it. I mean, I heard about, he called me three times in a week, and he talked to all of his friends and neighbors, and he was sickened, he doesn't like cats, but he wasn't trying to kill the cat. Ultimately, the city killed it, and he was very upset. He's someone where we could have maybe TNR'd it and put it back in his neighborhood, and he might have accepted it, he just didn't want it peeing in his garage anymore.
Do we risk taking too good a care of our cat population, then having a rodent problem?
I, I guess if that's our problem in 15 years, that would be something to talk about. I don't know, that's a good question, I'm not gonna debate you on that one one bit.
Let's say hypothetically, that a person has adopted an ear-tipped cat, would they be under, if this TNR program goes through, would they be under any legal obligation to return the cat to its vicinity? Asking for a friend?
So, the whole concept of an ear-tipped cat is that it doesn't have an owner, so, I guess if you take it into your house, you're risking ear mites and things like, the cat's gonna have ear mites, I mean, for sure, you're gonna wanna vet it. No, we see people, we get ear-tipped cats come into the shelter, I mean, we do, we've had people surrender them because they feel like they've become a spoiled indoor cat, and they need to go to an indoor life. I think it would depend on how the ordinance is written, and I'm encouraging you just to acknowledge that they exist, and that we're not gonna kill them if they're ear-tipped, unless there's a reason to euthanize them, we won't be doing that.
Hey Carrie, is there, when you talk about caregivers, could you further define that? Is that foster as well, or is that just people that feed the cats, or what is it?
It's people who feed cats, I'm not sure who's all out there. Another good experience of that in Yankton is, when I first started with Hartland, we created the city partnership, where I feel like we busted feeders a couple times a year, and what we did, it was like a good cop, bad cop. Lisa Brazel came in and played bad cop, and started catching all these cats and their property, and I was in the kitchen with these pet owners going, pick two, and I'll fix them, just pick two. And it was an emotional roller coaster. I will tell you, it never worked. We ended, the city would pull 30 cats from a backyard, we would fix two and give them back to that lady, and in five years, they were a nuisance again, and the city was listening to neighbors' complaints. So, it doesn't work to remove them, the feeders are gonna feed them, regardless of how everyone feels about it. And this really allows us to identify the good feeders, and educate them, and work with them, instead of them just having 60 cats in their backyard reproducing. Brad was behind me, but he sat down.
Thank you. Oh, one other concern I had, and I forgot till I sat down, but if we call these cats community cats, you know, who owns these cats? Are they owned by the community? My concern is, if one of these cats would bite someone, would another animal, another pet, a child, who's responsible for those medical bills on something like that? I don't know, I'm asking. If it's a community cat, if it's a cat that we caught, fixed, ear-tagged, released, is that something that the city can be liable for, in that we had that cat, and we released it back into the community, and now it's done harm? So, maybe this is a good time to transition into Ross's part of the presentation this evening?
To address that question, that's an excellent question. I don't know the answer to that, and that's one of the questions about this program that makes me feel a little uneasy, but, you know, I'm in favor of controlling the population, because I often get the calls that law enforcement is not necessarily well-equipped to deal with. I, you know, I'm the one who takes the calls from the individual that says, my neighbor is feeding, I know it, because the garage door is only open six, eight inches, and there's 40 cats that are constantly going in and out of there, but law enforcement can't necessarily catch them, because you can't see the bull sitting outside. And 40 cats is a big problem for a neighborhood, I mean, that becomes something that I have to figure out how to help them deal with, and controlling the population is important, but it's a two-pronged issue. You know, how do you control the population, and control the feeders who make the concentrations of cats? I don't know what the answer to that is. But in order to develop a TNR program that would work here, it's gonna take some effort between my office, Hartland, and law enforcement, to develop a program that would work for Yankton, to try to address some of those issues. You know, first of all, like you suggested, we need to address the leash laws, we need to address, to some extent, the harboring of strays ordinance, because by taking in the animal and neutering it, and then putting it back, is that harboring, I think it probably is, we need to carve out an exception for that one. And also, we need to deal with the issue of abandonment. If we take a stray animal that we picked up, we neutered it, and then we brought it back to the city, we're abandoning that animal back into the urban wild, I guess. But those issues can be remedied, it's just a matter of carving out an exception for these community cats. But how? We need to, I think we need to legislate how this program is going to work, if we're gonna do it, because the public is gonna need a place to go to figure out how this program is gonna work, they're gonna need to know the guidelines. Are we going to allow Hartland to trap and neuter what they trap and release, and allow the law enforcement to just take care of problem cats? When they get calls, can they pick up the cat and not have to bring it back, because that cat has demonstrated itself to be a problem? And let Hartland deal with the cats that don't appear to be getting the angry phone calls? Maybe that's a solution that everybody can live with. You know, how do we determine which cats can be re-released into the community? We're gonna wanna legislate that, what criteria? If it shows aggression, that actually might help it survive in the wild, but I'm not sure all of us feel super comfortable about taking an aggressive cat and releasing it back into town to fight with our pets that are lawfully on leashes and whatnot.
Isn't that where Hartland's professionalism, how they would normally take in an animal and say whether or not it's fit to go back to the public, or would that animal be foster possibilities?
That'd be a policy decision for this group, whether you wanna legislate that or not. I think if we're dealing with the complaint cats effectively, that takes a lot of my heartburn away, because if we're, if my office and the police department have to put the problem cats back, that doesn't address the concerns that Brad was talking about, it doesn't allow me to help provide a suitable remedy for people that have the animal that is messing up the nice old lady's rose garden, you know what I mean? But I can write anything you guys want, in terms of an ordinance structure for a TNR Sounds like they're not even asking for money, so, this is the best kind of program, but I just wanna know how it's gonna work, and get it in writing, and make it a part of the ordinance. But I'll leave it up to you guys. You know, some of the options that we had previously talked about, though, we don't need to do any changes if the release is outside of city limits. But if it's not to an accepting private property owner, we've got state law problems, whether it's on our public land south of the bridge, we have Nebraska invasive species laws that we're actually violating by releasing them into the wild, or if they're here in South Dakota, if it's not on a private property owner's property, it ends up becoming an abandoned cat based on state law, and we're violating statute outside of city limits. So, this would really be a program that we'd have to create only within city limits, or rely on the Humane Society's ability to find accepting property owners outside of town.
I guess that brings up a good question for me, Carrie. Do you have a limit timeframe on your grant money, that if you don't use it by a certain time, or have a program in place, you lose it, or you have it no matter what?
So, $3,000, the $3,000 Yankton County one is an emergency grant from HSUS. We really wrote that, we needed, we need to buy some equipment if we're gonna do this, and so, we can spend that before the timeframe is up. The other one, as I noted, the $1,500 is by June 30th of next year, but I'm also telling you, I can fix 25 cats in one day. So, if this takes till March, or April, or even May to figure it out, we would still be able to use that grant money in the timeframe. So, June of next year, I guess I need to have one surgery day.
And 25 captured cats.
We're doing it tomorrow for Vermillion, at the shelter.
You said there is a vaccination component to it, too, is it just determined that rabies, is that the only vaccination that they need?
So, yep, rabies is the only thing they need to be in compliance, I would be open to conversations if that's a concern. I will state to, our relationship with Vermillion looks at the overall health of the animal, so, and that talks a little bit about the aggressive. So, if a cat comes in with a dozen open battle wounds, or even one really infected one, we're gonna put that cat down, because it's a humane thing to do for the cat, and it's obviously causing a problem in the cat's community. So, the fighters don't make it out of TNR days, they're not the common. Tomorrow, we'll do 20 cats, and 18 will go back to Vermillion, would be my guess, if I have to guess, so.
One quick question for you, is Hartland willing to be the TNR capturing agency, as opposed to law enforcement, like you guys do in Vermillion?
So, we're ending that, the city and us, after a trial of, yes, we could start this program long-term, wanting to not be, it took us a while to create the relationships with the people we wanted to. I mean, there's people feeding you're never going to wanna work with, but we have about a dozen people in Vermillion now who are doing it the right way, they'll even run a cat to the vet on their own dime if they need to for an injury. And so, long-term, that would be my plan, is we have volunteers that will go out and trap them, but it's really a better win when we're not the bad guys either, right? So, if you've identified community or areas that support this, and let them bring you the cats, then everyone's happy.
I think what I've, if I've heard a constant message tonight, is that the TNR program could probably hold a lot of benefits for our community, it's just a matter of sitting down and figuring out some of these questions that, because this isn't something new, I'm sure other cities have solved these, so it just might involve some research, and figuring out what works best for Yankton.
Do you guys want us to pursue continuing discussions, and start crafting something that at least city staff could live with?
And I think, Amy, you serve on the Hartland Humane Society Board for the commission, correct? So, maybe you could be our liaison if they have, if they need commission input.
That would be perfect.
Ross, could you guesstimate for us, though, how much time do you think city staff will need to put into something like this?
No, I don't know. I guess the first step would be to have a meeting with the PD, and myself, and Hartland Humane, and to start creating our bullet points, must-haves, must-have-nots, and start whittling it down. It would take probably a few meetings, and some, probably more than a couple drafts. I can't tell you how long that'll take.
I imagine we can go in partially on this, certain parts of it, and adopt a lot sooner than, and work on the catch or release part, you know, six months down the road, something like that, too. Is that feasible?
Yeah, the literature's all out there to copy and paste and modify to fit Yankton's needs. I was really, I love Officer Parker, and the relation, the position that's been created, I think it's a good niche for Yankton, I don't think we need a full-time officer. So, Hartland's just, I think this is a good opportunity for us to come together in another way that we already are working together, and solve some of Brad Parker's problems too, and hopefully, he's not picking up more cats in the long term. So, that's not probably the most ideal time of his day.
Commissioners, any more discussion on this topic? Carrie, thank you again for presenting this opportunity for us, and attaining the grant funds, that helps make the decision even easier. And thank you to our police department for bringing forth some of the things we need to think through before we implement this program. With that, I think we'll adjourn until 7 o'clock for our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I did get a motion.